Council, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Randall Horst.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carl Stone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Straylon.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Court, Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Ann Visser to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and serve on the commission from 2012 to 2023, and attended forty-five of fifty-one meetings during her most recent term. She was reappointed to the commission in November 2023. If approved, Ann's new term will expire on May 1, 2029. Can I get a motion for approval? So moved. And Straylon, Carl Stone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to appoint Lori Baugh to fill a vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission. Lori is passionate about maintaining the integrity of Pell's heritage and values, its rich, rich history. If approved, Lori will assume the remainder of the vacant term, which expires on January 1, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have public forums. Anyone wishing to address council regarding agenda items, step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, we will have a public hearing for the budget and rezoning and all those things when they come up on the agenda. Okay, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Court. Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, so a public hearing regarding Broadway Street Improvement Project bids. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for representation on this item. Mayor DeWort stated that the purpose of this hearing in this resolution would be to approve the plan specifications contract estimate cost and only award the contract for the Broadway Street improvements. Now, basically, the section of Broadway Street that we're talking about is the section between University Street and Independence Street. It's also the orange highlighted section of the street on the big board. Now, this will be a complete reconstruction project, plus we also have the proposal this evening that we're entertaining is to return the street back to a brick street as well when we're completed. As far as to orientate everyone, the street goes right through Central College and campus here as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as bids, I'm concerned, the bids is we did have a lot of interest in the project. The bids range from one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand all the way up to one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand. The engineer's opinion of the probable cost is below one point five million dollars. Now, as far as the engineer's opinion on the matter, it is guarded and associated. They are recommending awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which is KLC Construction. Council were to approve this resolution this evening. We have a tentative completion date, possibly somewhere around COVID, and this is always contingent upon weather, scheduled for right around September 30th of this year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation. We will have to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments, questions?
Who is KLC?
I'd like to direct that question back to our Public Works Director, Danny Byer.
Yeah, we've had KLC in town. Actually, it's a sub a lot for other local contractors. This is the first time they've been primed and felled. Guards were put in and other committees as a prime, and it's worked out well. And we are hearing a lot of their subs are also kind of in reverse or fella contract, so. I believe your address is Sharon, or hold it down there. Sharon Corbin.
Which, which direction is it going to be done?
From south to north.
Okay.
Absolutely.
You decide to hurry.
All summer long, we've got to continue with. I know they have camps and all that. So, you know, our inspector will be there, set up, set down those days, try to referee. It's a complicated project, so.
Okay, anything else, counsel? All right, any comments from a member of the audience, public? Any questions or comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. DeYoung, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the resolution, number 6684, entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications Form Contract Estimating Cost. We see bids and making award contracts for Broadway Street improvements, University Street to Independence, Street Project. Can I get a motion for approval? So moved. Court, and Straylon, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Move on to public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2425 budget. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Mayor DeWort stated what this resolution would do, improve the city's fiscal year 2025 budget, and just to orientate everyone in the audience. When we talk about the 2025 budget, we're talking about the fiscal year that would begin on July 1st of this year and extend through June 30th of 2025. Now, overall, what is being proposed, and I'll go through this very briefly, on here, that we have total expenditures just shy of sixty-nine point five million dollars. This budget is very heavy on infrastructure. One of the projects that we just discussed included in this budget was the Broadway Street project on here as well. But when we look at it overall, we have a budget surplus of just under two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. I'd like to remind the council that when we take a look at the city's budget, this includes the general fund operations as well as all utility operations. Now, most of the items tend to deal with the city council level, tend to be general fund issues on this, where people typically associate it with the general government of the city of Pell. That budget that's included in here is about eleven and a half million dollar budget, and it has roughly a twenty-two thousand dollar surplus as well. Overall, for the city, again, the budget surplus that's being proposed with this is just under two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city's property tax rate, it has been at ten dollars and twenty cents for the last twenty-two years on this, unfortunately. We are proposing an increase this evening due to the city's property tax rate up to ten seventy-five. We have listed up on the board the primary reasons for this, but once again, they're really attributed to when we took over the Pell community ambulance on July 1, 2022. At that particular time, I'd like to remind everyone that A, ambulance provides an excellent service for our community. It's also an essential service. When we took over the operations of the ambulance, it was our goal to be able to do that without a property tax increase, and that has not materialized. The Pell ambulance has an operating subsidy that's included in the budget somewhere right around just shy of six hundred thousand dollars. When you look at property insurance that's happened across the state of Iowa for the general fund, we have roughly about a two hundred thousand dollar increase in the general fund for property insurance. And then really, the third item, and this is something that's been a trend for several years, is we're experiencing a decreased general fund revenue due to reduced state funding in the state of Iowa. And this deals with property tax legislation incurred in 2013, 2014, and the state backfill on that has been decreasing for cities. So if you take a combination of all three of these items, that is the reason why we're proposing to increase property taxes. However, I would also like to point out our rate at ten dollars and seventy-five cents is if you look at it compared to most cities across the state of Iowa, we have one of the lowest property tax rates in the state of Iowa. In fact, the cities that we have listed up on the board here, you can see their average is almost sixteen dollars without on there. So technically, it doesn't really matter if you compare us to our rate is, we'll aside for property tax rate as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as to conclude the rate increases, we're also proposing a ten percent increase to solid waste fees as well. And really, what this is, is looking back, there's been a couple increases, one of them is approved last year for the contractor, and one that we anticipate that will occur on July 1st of this year as well. With that, we have a ten percent increase in most people, citizens in the city of Pell. When we look at the fiscal impact, the city's budget, proposed property tax increase, plus the solid waste increase, is we believe the typical house in Pell will see right around a ninety-one dollar increase for city services this next year. It is important to note that the budget is proposing to maintain electric, water, wastewater rates, and Pell communication rates as well. Now, overall, as far as the typical increase, that breaks down to just under seven dollars and sixty cents per month for the typical house in Pell. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As we said, associated with the budget, it included 2025, and I did with roughly about twenty-five to twenty-six million dollars in capital improvements. When you look at the five-year plans in the city of Pell, it's just over eighty-two million dollars. We have some of the bigger projects listed in the budget, but I don't want to emphasize as well. Between the public safety vehicles, the street infrastructure that we have here involves utility investments, this budget is very heavy to the infrastructure as well. In addition, we've also included a long city's long-term facility plan in the five-year budget as well, or five-year capital improvement plan as well. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as salary increases for the city's workforce, we've budgeted a two percent proposed increase that would occur for the city's workforce on July 1st this year. In addition, we have budgeted step increases. Those would be merit adjustments for the city's workforce. So when you look at the total compensation increase that's associated with this budget, it's just over three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Now, the typical city employee, and this is a full-time employee, would receive right around a five percent compensation increase that's associated with this budget. Now, as far as the city's workforce, as we mentioned several times during the budget work sessions, this is very much a status quo operational budget. The budget proposes one full-time employee increase in that position's funding through a grant for the Pell Police Department as well. So overall, the city's workforce were right at a hundred and twenty-four full-time employees. All told, FTEs were probably more than four hundred FTEs, while that's what accounting in a part-time workforce on as well. Now, one of the items we want to make sure that we do mention is associated with the Pell community ambulance, and we said that we circle back with the council, is that's included in this budget, this proposed operational assessment for the Pell community ambulance. We spent a lot of time talking about ambulance services, particularly to entities that utilize the Pell ambulance service, but aren't necessarily. And the key question is, what is the charge going to be for those entities that utilize the ambulance service? So what we have planned here is an operational assessment, and associated with the budget, we did have a request from the Pell community ambulance for two additional part-time, not part-time, two additional paramedics as well. Once we have the results of the assessment on this, we're planning to revisit that request for the whole city council as well. So please keep that in mind. The hundred and twenty-four employees does not include two individuals requested paramedics by the Pell community ambulance on this. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, overall, we spend a considerable amount of time with the city, with the city budget, so I will go back into all the details that we covered during our work sessions in March. But, Mr. Mayor, we are working on any approval this evening, and this does, and this concludes our presentation. We won't have any answered questions. The council will have an office for the budget.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments received?
No written comments.
Comments, counsel?
Are we going to put out an analysis or a thing like Brian did before the study session on how the tax increase works? You know, remember that, the two hundred thousand dollar house, eighteen percent was the assessed value increase, and yet the rollback, because the biggest rollback change in history. So the taxes, even with this fifty-five percent increase, what you pay has done fifty changes. Or if not, it would go up some, move up some, but it would have gone up anyway if we had have been on the old system, but without raising the rate.
It's not dollars to dollars.
No, it's not quite dollars, no, it's supposed to be, as I end up playing. It's just that we help the people to understand why we had to raise the rate, because if we hadn't raised the rate, our, our revenue would have been flat, and it's never just been flat before. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I'll remember about that. I think to answer your question, we are planning to have an informational piece in the, in the city's newsletter. We're still working on drafts of that.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you for comment and your suggestion to talk specifically about the assessed value of homes.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
I just wanted to make sure I had mentioned this in the budget meeting, the concern about the staff that were not eligible for the step increases, that we are indeed going to revisit that in, I think it was July, that we were going to look at additional options for those not eligible.
Mandy, help me out as far as the need. I know we have that on policy and planning.
Okay, even better. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, got an opportunity for audience members to comment. If you want to, please come to the microphone, make your comments.
I'm not sure I want to go first, because I don't know what anybody else is going to say. Harry Early, 725 Countryside Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the study sessions that you had. I attended all four of them, and was impressed with a lot of questions and the information that was presented. What I was a little concerned about was that I didn't see any change in the budget. After questions and suggestions were made, the budget has just presented back the way it was six, five weeks ago, six weeks ago, whatever. Now, that may be either it's a good budget, it didn't need to be changed, or there weren't significant enough changes to be able to also identify money for those changes. Regarding the property tax, and again, you can remember, I'm a four-year resident, so I'm learning about this, but I did go over and talk to the assessor's office and, and treasurer's office. And my taxes, I went back and looked at and went up in 21, 22, went up three percent, next year, five percent, last year, one percent. And so this year, you're proposing five point four percent. And while we got a benefit from the legislature modifying the tax method, this tax increases was mission by Councilman Butler is really offsetting that. And I understand that, having, I've been in the fiscal government before, but I would also encourage you to, when you look at all these projects that we're going to do, the millions of dollars that we're going to be spending, I would encourage you to look more at maintaining our existing facilities, our streets, parks, other buildings. I know, I haven't had much time, but my general liability insurance went up twenty-seven percent this year. So I feel the pain that the city does. I had to rebid it, and I was able to come down some from that. Having been administrator of insurance programs in a couple of agencies, I understand the difficulty of getting qualified bids and also changing insurance carriers. So that part I understand. The other thing that concerned me about the ambulance assessment is that we've been carrying that now in the other year, and we've been able to do it so far without having to raise taxes. But I would also encourage you to look at the billing and invoicing methodology, because at an agency I administer, we changed that, and we're able to optimize a little bit more of a collection on downside. Historically, sixty percent is about what you can expect to collect. And so I'm, I understand what you're going through there. The last thing I'd like to say is, talking with several people around town that are on fixed incomes or working second jobs, and to just make things meet, even a five percent increase in their property tax is going to affect them. I can afford it, I can honestly say it. I'm retired, and I've got adequate resources, regardless of what the stock market does. But anyway, keep an eye on it. Thank you for taking input. And I would also like to address the water grade issue later, and get it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Erickson, 506 Brooks Drive. In previous meetings, we talked about the potential essential services tax. I was wondering if you could briefly remind everyone what effect that might have if it passes on the increased tax level. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Try to give a summary on it. The essential services tax would be a tax that would be a referendum in Marion County as a whole. It would take sixty percent of the voters in Marion County to approve the tax on it. And we spent time at the city council meeting talking about the essential services tax and the reason for the property tax increase, which the majority of the reason is, I want to preface this, the ambulance provides an excellent service to our community, if necessary. What the essential services tax would be is, I believe, the maximum levy amount could be up to seventy-five cents if approved by the voters in Marion County. The biggest advantage that we would have on this from an essential services tax is when you look at the entities that receive ambulance service from the city of Pell, that would be the township set up, the city of Pell in Marion County. So it would be the summit township, as well as Lake Prairie. They would have the ability to pay their ambulance or additional revenues from that as well. What we mentioned with that effect could be is, there is at least, we believe, a referendum like they occurred would be March of 2025. If that were to pass, that would be actually the next fiscal year, so that would be the fiscal year starting on July 1st of next year. We talked internally in all three, the council decision, what we do with the city's property tax rate, but there was discussion that if the essential services tax was passed in Marion County, there could be potentially a decrease in the city's operating levy to offset the tax that would be paid by the city of Pell, since the tax would be coming from Marion County. There's a lot of details to work out. We're actively working on this proposal. But right now, the tentative timeline is March of next year. So with that, the total revenue take on it, we have roughly about fifty cent levy. It's entirely dependent on the distribution formula that would be approved by the supervisor. So we don't have an estimate on what that could generate, potentially help offset our cost unfortunately at this time.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. DeYoung, who said this? Hopkins? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6685, entitled Resolution Adopting the Fiscal Year 2425 Annual Budget, Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. I don't recommend a motion for approval. So moved. Court, DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, public hearing on rezoning application from Pell Christian Grade School Society for 303 Liberty Street from Neo Traditional Single Family Residential, R1C to Institutional INS. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, we actually have two items on the agenda, both of these rezoning items were submitted by Pell Christian Grade School, two separate public hearings tonight. But the good news is we're only going to have one presentation on them on matters. So orientate everybody to Pell Christian Grade School, the two properties that are being proposed to be rezoned, are these yellow highlighted areas here, that are 303 Liberty and 304 Liberty as well. Both of the proposed new uses would be institutional zoning. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, anytime we have a rezoning request, we always want to make sure that we identify at least conformity with the city's comprehensive plan. In this particular case, the city's comprehensive plan follows property ownership at the time of the comprehensive plan with draft and equipment 2014. So we have Pell Christian Grade School, this institutional zoning right here. The two properties that we have located are right here. It is important to note that the yellow area, there's low density residential, and so the whole acquisition of properties, Pell Christian also owns these properties, which apply to these properties as well. Now, as far as land use compatibility, it's not only important if you look at the future use land map, but there's also indexes that talk about proposed uses on there. And they range from one means incompatible all the way up to five, which means completely compatible. Now, as far as the low density residential use as well as proposed school use, they're fairly compatible. It ranks four out of five on there. So from a land use compatibility standpoint, staff does not believe or there does not appear to be conflict as well. And really, when you look at the city's comprehensive plan, there's institutional zoning that is a buddy on, on this as well. And so from comprehensive standpoint, we believe it conforms to the rezoning requests given to Pell Christian conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. I'd also like to mention, as far as the issue of spot zoning, we do not believe it is spot zoning with this with institutional zoning being very close to both of these properties as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay, and I believe we've already covered this as well. It is important to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did release a rezoning ordinance on Port One Building at the March 25th meeting, so it's fair enough to lose that presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. I know we've received, all of us, I assume, received a few letters, some of my written communication. We've seen everything, right?
Yes, yes, and I received this in the pack, which was portable.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, any comments?
It's my understanding this is all about traffic patterns, beginning and end with school day. And any of you that have been around late school, beginning and ending of school day, know that they're trying to avoid here. So I realize it might change the neighborhood, but it's sort of been a purpose.
Is part of me returning into green space?
Yes.
Yeah, one, one, one is for parking or traffic flow on one green space, right?
Can you help me understand what traffic flow would change? I'm not very good at legalizing that stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, but the planning is not available yet. It'll come out next, Planning and Zoning meeting, the layout. But what we're doing is allowing more cars into that space, allowing more parking, so that we get traffic off of the third street.
Basically, people are parking on the street right now, because traffic's just so packed up.
Yes.
So the queue is backing up those streets in the front?
This morning, there was a school bus tanked with a passenger vehicle by Lincoln School. What a nightmare. The police were doing the best they could.
One of the notes or letters mentions interest in moving those houses. Are there any, is that a real possibility, one? And two, are there any other infill lots where those houses can move, so we mean paying the residential concern, the supply that is to, to in-town housing units that might be in a good price range for people?
As far as the house moving, I believe for Pell Christian, that would be the question probably around Pell Christian. And two, as far as in-built lots, and we'll be talking about the building request here very shortly at the city council meeting. I believe as far as the number of billable lots that we have in subdivisions in Pell, are numbered right at twenty-nine. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're just about, just under thirty billable lots in the city, and not all of those are usable billable lots. So we are very short supply where we potentially move these homes.
Yeah, please keep in mind when we mention twenty-nine, that may not mean a lot. Typically, we issue between fifty to sixty building permits a year on a three-day homes.
But maybe this is getting too deep or too difficult to answer. You guys have significant land east of the building. There could be, I just envision a connector there. Would that, are there other options to solve the flow issues on? Would that, are there other options to solve the flow issues on land that you already own without taking? I think the valid concern is that we are on a supply issue. And I'm not trying to get full of problems, but is there another flow that could be advantageous in a bigger picture than just those two essential lives and more parking, I guess? I'm just trying to ask the question.
Our plan is to add on to the east of the building, so by putting parking over there would not affect it wise, so.
Maybe I can help that a little bit. One of the past phases, if you guys can correct me more later, that actually the parent pickup now loops in and out and goes back out the alley, the bus pickup, so we've separated the bus pickup and the parent pickup. And these folks are queuing on Third during a climate weather day, then the first kid to get out on the run, and they're crossing between cars on Third Street, and it's a bad situation. So anything we can do to get the cars off of Third is better for the whole neighborhood.
Okay, anything else, council? All right, then any comments from the audience? If you do, please come to microphone.
I'm Keith Rassell, three oh six Liberty, and you might guess why I'm standing here. Yeah. We would like the council to reject the zoning and planning commission's rezoning from residential to institutional. Obviously, this is personal, at least at one level. My back door faces toward the Pella Christian School. When this goes in, it will be probably fifteen to twenty feet of a parking lot right by my door. If you know the lots in this part of town, they're very narrow, fifty foot on the original block, but two hundred and fifty feet, which leaves me two hundred and fifty feet exposed on that side of my house. Obviously, there's more noise when you get a parking lot right up next to your back door. Parking lot generates more heat in that way. We're really concerned about privacy. When we moved in, there were two houses off to the, by now, we are right on the edge of things. That originally, and I think there's some dispute on this, Jerry Stumpf owned three oh four, and he had told people that he did not want a privacy fence put next to that, his lot. That was not what Jerry told us. Again, how to decide what that. And then I, we talked with some people about, somebody about planting shrubs or trees or things along that plot line to give us some space, because right now, a fair amount of my house looks right into that parking lot still. Nothing ever happened on either of those, even though we were under the understanding that they were mandated on the last project that the Christian School did. And as people have mentioned, it doesn't look to us like a parking problem. If you look at where people come down at three-thirty in the afternoon, like Lincoln School, and see, yeah, people are backed up, but it's not because there's a lack of parking. There's all kinds of parking there. It's a traffic flow problem, and I'm, again, we haven't seen any plans that says how this is going to fix that. So until we do, we'd like to, we'd like to see how, whether that's going to fix it, because I don't think parking's going to do it. We are concerned about the way the decision-making process is going and how we've been notified. I don't know the difference between low residential and residential, but it seems to me that residential is, in the comprehensive plan, if it's residential, people depend on that, and we're not sure why the exception has been made in this case. Originally, this school told us they were going to keep the house at three oh four, and at one point, it was going to be a shop project to restore it. The next time, it was going to be a residence for a Spanish immersion teacher, which did happen once. And it seemed to us like this has all been just a done deal that calls into question, I think, at least some of the integrity of this decision-making. We've received a letter ten days before the zoning and planning commission meeting, and we'd already had a vacation scheduled long, long before that. The trees, there were two trees cut down, a really great old maple and a chestnut tree before any decision was even made. That sounds like people were pretty confident that this, that there wasn't going to be any decision that was going to go against them at that point, no matter who objected. And again, there haven't been any plans posted that we've seen. So we don't think that taking these two lots and zoning them institutional is good for the community. We need residential housing, we need no lots. People like to live near schools, right? That's one of the things that you advertise, is are you close to schools, are you close to shopping? And again, this is in the original plot of the town, and I think that we mostly are just worried because the school keeps gobbling things up, lot by lot, and pretty soon, the neighborhood's going to be a parking lot. And we've already, these will be the fifth and the sixth houses lost to parking for the Christian Grade School. More than once, I've talked with people from the Grade School, and I think they're honestly thinking that they're being good neighbors, and they say we'd like to be good neighbors. I don't see how tearing down the houses in the neighborhood is being a good neighbor. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, or Ms. Dryland, any discussion?
I would like to see the proposed traffic flow plan. Here's what this is all about, supposedly.
Did we see that before this effort?
Do you want me to chime in here?
Any city attorney question?
Right now, we're just talking about the public hearing, so when we move to the ordinance, we can have that discussion. But it would be, so if you decide that you want to move forward with it, or if you want to postpone it, that's kind of a decision that, you know, if you want to entertain a motion to postpone it, that can be done. That's a procedural matter. If you decide whether you want to pass or vote on the ordinance itself, you need four people to pass it. Three will defeat it, four will pass it. Does that make sense? Do you have other questions?
Close the public hearing without actually acting on the.
Yeah, you can close the public hearing. That's what you do now, and then you can move on to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, so this vote is to close the public hearing, and then we move to the actual ordinance. So, so are we, we're still in discussion, though? We're still, we're still in the public hearing, and we need to close that, and then we'll go to the ordinance where there's more time for discussion.
Right.
So.
The alternative, I guess, would be to keep the public hearing open and postpone the motion to entertain, keeping the public hearing open and to a later date, something that would be similar to the rest of our.
So we have, we have a motion to close the public hearing on the table. That's what we have to go about now.
We do that, boy.
We have a motion to close the pen's board.
Okay.
So our vote is to close the public hearing. That's the extent of this vote.
Yep.
And we'll have another discussion.
So will there be more time for public discourse if it were delayed? Or if we ask for more time? Will there be more public?
We won't have another public hearing, but we, I would assume anyone can talk about it in our regular.
Sure.
If it's on the agenda later. Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. may you please call a roll?
Hopkins.
Yes.
James Dryland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randall Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion pass. Now we move to ordinance number ten thirty-eight, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property located at three oh three Liberty Street and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map at its first reading. It's our motion for approval.
So.
Ms. Dryland, Hopkins, now discussion.
So the thing that, there's a few things that are being discussed here, and some of it is about use and about housing. And as it stands right now, if the, if the ownership wanted to level the houses, they could without any approval or whatever. So the housing portion of it is, if there's some other point, say, just as the owners make a, make a grasp, which will then, in a way, at least visually extend the property itself. And like any institution that is landlocked, this is a tricky situation just because they, they want to grow their organization, and really, the only way to do this geographically is through acquisition and change, so. So, tricky situation, I can see where it's coming from.
This is also the first reading, so as we move along, I could acquire more information. If I could get some more information down the road. Is there, is there a petition for my third reading to ask that traffic flow?
It's already in.
Okay. It's just going through.
D and Z, Metro, the twenty-second.
So before we leave, have third reading, we have that information.
That counts.
And my understanding, in a conversation with Larry, that a number of people expressed interest in moving the homes, and when they found out all the costs involved in doing that, they walked away.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? We're going to vote then on the ordinance ten thirty-eight, approving ordinance ten thirty-eight. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. may you please call a roll?
James Dryland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randall Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion pass. Moving to, so we go back into a public hearing on rezoning application from Pella Christian Grade School Society for three oh four, maybe Liberty Street from two-family residential, R two to institutional INS. Nothing to add, I'm sure you brought us only one.
That's correct.
All right, so we've had the written, or we've seen the written comments, which are the same oral comments. Anything council has more to say?
Would you please?
No, 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 we're not there. We're into a second public hearing. We have to do it per property.
Yes.
So, so this is an opportunity for anyone else out there to make a comment about this rezoning request. All right, seeing none, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Hopkins.
Ms. Dryland. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. may you please call a roll?
Hopkins.
Yes.
James Dryland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randall Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Now we're moving to ordinance number ten thirty-nine, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property located at three oh four Liberty Street and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map at its first reading. I get a motion for approval. Ms. Dryland, Hopkins, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. may you please call a roll?
James Dryland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randall Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion pass. All right, now we have another public hearing regarding an ordinance amending microbrewery regulations in the central business district. Mike?
Ladies, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on the side of the mayor board saying this proposed ordinance would amend the zoning code to allow one microbrewery to operate in the central business district and is subject to obtaining a special use permit for adjustment. It is important to note that we did discuss this proposed ordinance or concept anyway in February of this year. Recommendation that we're considering this evening is from the planning and zoning commission. May I, before we go on, briefly move to section sixteen. This is, everything you see in green would be, is the central business district zoning district. So when we talk about allowing microbreweries, which are currently not permitted in the central business district, council board approved this ordinance, we would allow one microbrewery to operate in the central business district. So, may I, let's go ahead, we can go back to the presentation, please. And I believe we've got this covered, so let's go ahead and move on. Now, we talk about specially used permits. That's a provision under the city zoning code, the intention of a special use permit. These are for uses that may be good fits in your zoning code. They may, they may present some land use compatibility issues, but it really depends on what exactly is being proposed and the location of it. And from the city standpoint, this is the safeguard that the city has and employs in cases where we sense that there may be land use compatibility issues on this. But with the case of the special use permit with this, is the process would be is we had an applicant in council board approved this ordinance, and an applicant wishes to open up a microbrewery in the central business district. What would happen is, once we have the location and proposed plan by the property owner, we would hold a public hearing at the board of adjustment. We would also notify all of any property owners within two hundred feet of this property. And this would give any property owner that may have concerns with microbrewery use a chance to voice those concerns to the board of adjustment before a business license is granted by the board of adjustment. Now, with that, it's also important to note that there's a considerable amount of detail that's involved with special use permits on this, and the board of adjustment has a wide range of authority in granting a business license or the ability to operate under a special use permit. They can, for instance, limit the amount of production of a microbrewery, they can limit the hours of operation, and they have other means available to them. Again, it's completely wide-range laws to limit the microbrewery. The charge in the matter is to ensure land use compatibility between the proposed use and the abutted property owners. I would also like to mention, in case that there are problems with the microbrewery, council would approve this ordinance. Just as the board of adjustment was able to grant a business license, they could also revoke the business license as well. Now, one of the key items I wanted to cover with tonight's ordinance, when we originally talked about this in February of last year, we talked about the microbrewery and council all the time, the statistics, our collections generally supportive of it. We understand this on the planning and zoning for review. We talked about the potential of limiting it down to one business license. That's similar to what we have for bars and parents in the central business district. And at the time, I think the consensus was, we wanted to have more research on that before adopting that. I mean, there's no need to discuss the one business license out there, meaning when they considered it, and that was their recommendation to have one business license, which would be similar to how we regulate bars and parents in the central business district as well. So, but then, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and may you conclude the last minute's flight. Now, based on staff's review of this, this is a tax amendment to the city zoning code, so we're allowing this as a possibility of a microbrewery in the downtown. But once again, that's subject to obtaining a special use permit from the city's board of adjustment as well. And it is important to note that the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this ordinance at the March twenty-fifth meeting, and the city administration's recommendations for approval of the proposed ordinance this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Council, any comments?
Are there any prospective people out there?
As far as people interested, if parties are interested, I believe it would be yes.
It would be yes.
Are we also saying the limit of two, or are we all at the market to decide that?
The ordinance, the ordinance, just to be clear, the ordinance has.
It might have to go back to planning and zoning, and then I, I'd have to look into whether it's a super majority.
Yeah, there, there's a possibility because it's the planning and zoning recommendation on one, to change the recommendation they require the super majority, if we wanted to go up to state two or remove the requirement altogether.
Well, I personally just sound a bit kind of government limiting free market about, and this seems to be doing that around that way. I know the business type is, you know, potentially controversial, but they, the SUP process is fairly limiting in and of itself. Obviously, real estate's a limit, market conditions go in there. I, I don't feel that it's our jurisdiction or business limiting how many windows or seats are on the square, or how many, you know, weed markets or whatever else, so I don't see why that part needs to be a part of it, but.
It's optically having a number.
Yeah.
We don't have an answer for either day on the super majority, but I'm certainly happy to look into it if you want to post on this.
Uh, no, we need to postpone, just keep moving forward, and we've decided something we can. Yeah, this is the first reading of the ordinance this evening, so my second reading will have an answer if, if it would require five votes to change the ordinance.
Make nationwide beer consumption has really gone down, the trend is anticipated to continue. I think if we could have one healthy, successful microbrewery would be a good thing, and I don't go beyond that.
Okay, anything else? Alright, any member of the audience want to address this issue?
Can I just ask what the board of adjustment is?
The board of adjustment?
Yeah.
Yeah, the city board of adjustment is separate, well, it's not a separate, separate entity of the city of Pella, but it's apparently autonomous board. Their main charge is looking at what people would commonly refer to as zoning variances. So, in other words, a common case of the city board of adjustment is, for instance, you would like to place a deck on your home, but you need additional area and you're going to violate or you would be in the setback area of your property line. They consider those matters on, on this as well. They also consider use, use items such as special use permits, and they have exclusive per, uh, per view over that, over that matter. The last item that they have, the city board of adjustment, is the staff oftentimes will something the subject of transportation votes from our zoning administrator as well as the city attorney. If they, an applicant feels that we made it in here and judgment administration zoning code, staff's decisions can be appealed at the board of adjustment. Now, with that, the legislative approval is, the board of adjustment is the final stop, the final authority on matters at the city, so the decisions cannot be appealed to the city council for correction or wrong. If there's a disagreement with the decision of the board of direct, uh, board of adjustment's decision, the next step would be to report.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Who?
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion?
So, I'm gonna beat this thing with a dead horse. How hard would microbrewery number two, how hard a task would it be for microbrewery number two to come to CBD? Can you walk that through? They, they don't, by this ordinance, we only allow one. So, someone will have to petition us to reconsider this ordinance, correct?
It's another tax amendment, it's unimportant if you wanted to allow two microbrewers. So, I would actually go, we would just have to go through this concerning after that.
Sorry.
Or they would have to locate it just outside of the CBD. So, basically just simply the same process, but instead of one, it's two.
Or.
I get how far we've come. Why are we as a government agency limiting the amount of business that we want to come to? Just a discussion topic.
I think part of it is competition for available space.
But that, that's free market decides.
Free market, yes. But there is a lot of lack of available space.
And I think, um, what we're looking at is an old ordinance, and years ago, I had a wonderful conversation with, uh, Mr. Hirma, and there was a push years ago, um, there were a substantial number of ranking establishments on the square. And there was a push to restore retail onto the square, um, and this was part of, of that push was putting a limitation on bars, opening up space for retail. So, that's what it's, we're looking at, an older ordinance.
And, but also, it's more of a selling ordinance than a permission to build a business, like, no different than what I'm gonna let a, there's currently zero factors that can operate in the CBD. So, it's not necessarily given one person full taken, it's simply about what are the types of businesses or uses in certain zone.
And I think when this ordinance was established, there was, they, it was more of a hard alcohol type of bar situation, and, um, if memory serves me correctly, at that time, there were like seven or nine bars on the square. And so, yes, and so, um, Osco Louisa had a majority on the retail business, and so they were trying to repaint it and make it a softer, friendlier environment. And so, they passed this, and then quickly after that, the Dutch fronts came in.
Yes, you're talking sixties.
Yes.
You should claim historical perspective.
Yes.
You almost had me switched, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm stayed very, very high as far as just government's intervention in the free market, and so.
And indeed, you can tell in a, kind of a historical, uh, it was a very ordinance that saved the square at that time.
So, I normally agree with you a hundred percent, but I disagree with you here. I think, I don't think that, I think that, I think it's our duty as the governing body of the city, we, we certainly can't keep anybody from coming to Pella as a business, whatever the business. But I do think through the zoning code, we can kind of dig, kind of use the zoning code to create the kind of atmospheres and areas of, of our community that we want certain things, and so I think, we all know there was a big bloody battle about this a few years ago, uh, so I think this is a good start, uh, and certainly we can, could add, but I, I think it's a good first start, and, and I think it's part of what we should, this group should do.
Right, and I hear you about the zoning dictator, and I think, uh, sitting through three consultancies that are looking to be a part of our next iteration of that comp plan zoning ordinance is, I wanna be wise in thinking further in the future than just our rearview mirror from four or five years ago. Um, and, you know, microbrewery is usually pretty class acts and off the table, and we've got a hundred and fifty thousand people in, through us in the late spring, and those are the kind of places that end up attracting to the retail industry or whatever, so, um, I just wanted to have the discussion, I think it would be good to throw this at this public hearing.
Put it in perspective, we're one time guy had sixteen saloons, but.
When, when you started on council?
Yeah. But a number of years ago, this came up, kind of following up on land, and we had young entrepreneur who worked and learned to do this, and this person had resources enough to stick with it and make it happen and be successful, and we lowered it down. And to this day, I will call it one of the dumber things the council has ever done.
But I think it's important to understand that there's, that there's a differentiation between the business models that were given to us at this time, at that time, and we went from a microbrewery to a brew pub to a cocktail lounge, so, you know, all of these moving parts come, come to play, and it, it was a learning curve. And if, if I recollect correctly, a microbrewery serves no food, correct? It all hinges on the amount of food that you sell, and that was our sticky wicket. And so, um, yeah, that, that was kind of the.
That was our excuse for saying no.
Well, no, it was, it, there was a changing business model constantly that came for us, but I do believe a, a microbrewery does not have to sell fifty percent food.
I mean, yeah, I'm not trying to distract from, it's, it's near the number on there. I think this is a great start, somebody said start? Okay, great. Great first step forward.
Okay. I assumed we'd have a long meeting, I didn't expect to get hung up on this.
You're welcome. Well, we need to finish back to C B U.
Alright, so, uh, we're gonna vote on the motion to approve ordinance number ten forty. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. may be, please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynorholt?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Boston?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Alright, so next item on the agenda is, we're gonna have a pickleball presentation. Let me tee this up a little bit. We had a, we had a policy and planning session, I don't know, a couple months ago maybe, about pickleball. We had some passionate, there was an item on our agenda about tearing up some pickleball courts, and we had a passionate group of people come and, and we asked the council to not do that. If I remember right, you guys correct me, but it seemed like the, kind of the consensus from the council was, we wanted to explore some pickleball option moving forward. So, I, I distinctly remember saying to the group, uh, you guys just need to organize, get together, come back to the council with a proposal for pickleball options. Like, two days after that, I got a phone call from the group. They organized very quickly, they did exactly what we talked about doing. Uh, I also got a phone call from Central College that they were in the process of maybe redo their tennis courts and they were gonna add some pickleball. So, I mean, two groups have been having conversations, and so tonight, they're going to, uh, give us a, a presentation about how the city may, may participate with the, uh, the expansion of pickleball options.
So, it's an invitation?
Huh?
It's an invitation for the city, you're saying?
It's a, yeah, invitation for the city to help, so. Floor is yours, pickleballers.
Thank you. Let's go, we're just cheering all night, so, good thing. You guys hear me? Eric Van Clay, vice president for athletics at Central College thirteen sixty-one Northwest Drive, and greatly appreciate this opportunity, so, uh, next slide. So, one of the things that, that I've learned, uh, a lot about in the last two months, um, I knew just from simple experience and being around town the last three to five years is, pickleball has increased. Uh, when you really dig into the numbers and look at participation rates, not only is it the fastest growing sport in our local community, but also region, uh, state and nationally, um, and I think there's a lot of reasons for that. Um, it has increased by a hundred and fifty-eight percent, uh, over the last three years. Um, it is unbelievably inclusive for all ability levels, all ages, uh, and it's very affordable. Uh, there's a reason that's being presented in our elementary schools, in our high schools, in our junior high. Uh, anybody can play it, uh, you can play it with your grandchild, you can play it with your friends, you can play it with your coworkers, and it is just really, uh, it's a fun sport, whether you have twenty, thirty minutes, or you have three hours, uh, to do that. Pickleball attracts a very diverse group, um, of all, uh, skill levels. Um, we have some experts in here that are phenomenal, uh, they never tell you that, but they are, uh, they're extremely, uh, talented in it, uh, but also very patient as far as getting other people in it. And, and the simplest way that I can explain this, um, in, in a matter of about three sentences is, um, our interest, our participation rate and number of people involved is skyrocketing. Uh, the facilities and places for them to use in this community is going the exact opposite direction. So, uh, we've had aging facilities that have been taken offline, and what we'd like to show you is a very cost-effective collaborative way that we can probably address those needs much more affordably than what people would think. So, next slide. So, what we're looking at is, uh, a collaborative method between, uh, Central College of putting a significant amount of funds forward, uh, the Pella Pickleball Club, and asking for the city's participation in this. Uh, we think, uh, by doing this together, uh, we can address this need very, very quickly in the way of, of late summer, early fall, and also in a much more, uh, cost-effective way, and the, the example that I gave to Mayor DeWort and other people when I've talked to, uh, about it a little bit is, um, I, I, i- if I had a do-over, I'm not sure that everybody else would necessarily quite see it this way, but as somebody who pays property tax and has kids in the school district and everything else, I'm not sure we need three term deals. Um, I, I, I don't know that that's quite essential. Um, I come from Northwest Iowa and, uh, a, a place called Orange City, had a Christian school, just like we have, and a public school, just like we had, and a college, and they got by with one, and we've had three. And, and that horse has long since left the barn, but I think this is an opportunity to look at a situation like that and say, can we do much more together rather than going in different directions and pulling dollars in different directions when it comes to not only public entities, but also, uh, private fundraising and things like that? Can, can our dollars go much further together than they can separately? Next. So, where, where this kind of became a, a little bit more of a poppet, uh, topic of discussion at Central College is, we have six tennis courts that were aging and need to be addressed anyway. Um, we've simply paused as a, as a board of trustees and leadership group on that to say, is this an opportunity, uh, under the umbrella, we have a, uh, initiative at Central College called Imagine More, of, of being better stewards in the community, uh, showing more initiative of ways that we can reach out to different community groups, and we really see this under the umbrella of that Imagine More, where we can really use a situation like pickleball, that we can open up facilities that we have, uh, to all age groups, um, to all people in the community and, uh, in users. The other thing that's a little bit unique about this situation with, with our tennis courts that are aging and need to be replaced is, when, when the pickleball demand is at its highest, um, when you think end of the school year, over the summer, um, you know, early fall, is when our usage is at our lowest, uh, for Central College, because our students are out of, out of class. So, what we're looking at is addressing, um, the court needs that we have, uh, we saw a bid out on that by Mid-American Courts out of Kansas, um, they're highly recommended, they do jobs like this all the time. We can address our courts and, uh, get brand new, uh, resurfacing for all of that with twelve pickleball courts, uh, permanent lines on that for roughly six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? We, uh, we've been in the fundraising, uh, stage of that, to be able to come up with some funds for that, and we would like the, the city's help and partnership, uh, with us and the pickleball club with that. So, uh, we would look at, uh, getting on their, uh, schedule for addressing those courts , uh, later this summer. Uh, they feel like they could look at a late July, early August start with approximately two month turnaround, so we could have those courts up and going, um, early fall with twelve pickleball. use a situation like pickleball, that we can open up facilities that we have to all age groups, to all people in the community and in users. The other thing that's a little bit unique about this situation with our tennis courts that are aging and need to be replaced is, when the pickleball demand is at its highest, when you think end of the school year, over the summer, you know, early fall, is when our usage is at our lowest for Central College, because our students are out of class. So what we're looking at is addressing the court needs that we have. We sought a bid out on that by Mid-American Courts out of Kansas. They're highly recommended, they do jobs like this all the time. We can address our courts and get brand-new resurfacing for all of that with twelve pickleball courts, permanent lines on that for roughly six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've been in the fundraising stage of that, to be able to come up with some funds for that, and we would like the city's help and partnership with us and the pickleball club with that. So, we would look at getting on their schedule for addressing those courts later this summer. They feel like they could look at a late July, early August start with approximately two-month turnaround, so we could have those courts up and going early fall with twelve pickleball courts, six tennis courts available free. I know that's everybody in Pella's favorite word, a hundred percent Dutch, so I understand that. But free and available for all users in this community, and really just continue to kind of ride that momentum of the pickleball interest in the community. The other thing that I think is vitally important as a group that manages other facilities at Central College, Central College would maintain all yearly and regular maintenance of that. So it's not something that we're gonna come back to the city on and say, you know, a couple of years from now, whatever, resurfacing, or doing the lines, or daily cleaning, stuff like that, Central would take over all routine and yearly maintenance of the facility. Next slide, please. And this is a brief history, and I'm gonna pull up a partner of mine, Paula Allen, to come talk a little bit about these pictures, but I think sometimes pictures are literally worth a thousand words, where it talks about how things kind of began and where we're at now, so, Paula.
I'm kind of used to doing this, so bear with me. My name is Paula Allen, I am now the President of the Pella Pickleball Club.
You can get the microphone then.
Oh, thank you. So I'm gonna give you the community side of it.
A little closer.
Really?
Yeah, they're gonna swallow that one.
So I'm gonna give you like the personal side, the community side of this, so bear with me, this is new for me. So, the Pella Pickleball Club, at Central College, and the city of Pella really has a unique opportunity here to work together and do something pretty special. Our club's mission is to promote and encourage sport pickleball through access, education, opportunity to play for all ages and skill levels. With this partnership, we'd be able to provide more access to courts, educate more people, and create more community involvement. Pickleball truly is the friendliest sport out there. Kind of look back, like when you went to kindergarten and you went to the playground and someone said, will you play with me? That's what pickleball is like. You come to the court, you bring your paddle, and someone will say, come play with me. And that is probably the most unique uniqueness of the sport, and makes it the most special. How many people are playing pickleball at Pella? That's probably your biggest question. So right now, what we have, we have a hundred and sixty names in our pre-membership database. We have not even had a membership like drive yet. We have six hundred and eighty-nine people on our Facebook page. So, there's a ton of people playing. You've got kids playing, you've got teenagers playing, they go there after school on Wednesday early hours, you've got young professionals playing on Monday nights, you've got women's playing on Tuesdays and Tuesday mornings, you've got mixed on Fridays, I mean, there are a ton of people playing. So it's pretty awesome. Statistics say that ten percent of the population is playing. Pella has nine thousand three hundred and forty-four people ages ten to seventy-four. That is your potential pot of people to play. And, you know, Pella always exceeds, right? So I'm sure we're exceeding the ten percent. In 2015, what you see here are these guys right here, they started this. They went and painted, first we started in 2015 with tape lines, painter's tape. That's how they started at Kiwanis. And then these gentlemen here, on their own, did this initiative, came to the city and asked if we could paint four dedicated courts. They did it themselves. Then we came to the city and then we did get designated courts at Kiwanis, and then we got designated courts at Caldwell. So it's like a pretty exciting kind of history story and seems like that's how it started. In 2022, we got Smash Park. And now, in 2024, I can give you our court count. We have six dedicated courts at Caldwell. We have one concrete court painted lines at Rotary. We no longer have six courts at Kiwanis, we no longer have Smash Park or indoor, and we no longer really have access at PCD, the three indoor lined courts with a portal net. Unfortunately, this has created, people are leaving our community to play in the other cities, they are traveling to Des Moines, Oskaloosa, Marshalltown, et cetera, they're kind of where we were ahead of the curve, now we're behind the curve. And we want people to be talking about us. We wanna say, hey, let's go to Pella and play, shop any. We're gonna...
Next slide, please. So what we would ask the city for is, of that six hundred and seventy thousand, a three hundred thousand dollar investment in FY twenty-five, a three hundred thousand dollar investment from the city. The partnership between Central College and the Pickleball Club would cover the remaining, roughly three hundred and seventy thousand. So, not exactly a fifty-fifty split, we would cover more of the portion of that, but as a perspective, to replace the courts that were left at Kiwanis with six courts, you'd be looking at roughly seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand. We go from six courts to twelve courts and reuse the space that we already have rather than creating new space. So, once again, when I know funds are extremely tight and pulled in a variety of direction, we look at this as a very cost-effective collaborative way of three entities working together to accomplish a common goal. And we really do believe we are better together working with this, so.
Thanks, Eric. Jim Palmer, One-on-One Pike Forest in Pella. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that you didn't happen to touch on. It warmed my heart last night, there was a father and a daughter, ten-year-old daughter, learning to play pickleball. We had a couple of our group from the young professionals, Pella Corp Vermier, some of the other businesses in town, invited this father-daughter to come over and play with our group so that they could kind of learn the sport. To see that kind of warmth from our young professionals inviting that group in, I was out there, sixty-two years old, I started learning pickleball with Doty Bode over here a few years ago. Doty's not playing anymore, she says, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity to take her home again. But just, again, all-inclusive, it might cost a little bit for the courts to be built, but after that, then it's fun for all with very low investment. I've played with people that come to town from the campgrounds, who come to see our tulips and other things, and it's a great networking, community event for people. And quite frankly, our recreation department, I think, does a fantastic job, but there's very few activities for people of aging forty, fifty, sixty-year-olds that are in the community that the Pella Rec supports. So this would be a great activity to support. They already covered the loss of the existing courts, but this partnership with Central College, as a former business owner here in town, I would have killed for an opportunity to get onto campus and interact with some of these college students who are going to be our next business leaders. This is an opportunity to partnership with the college, with those students, with those prospective leaders, and even if they leave town, they're gonna have a great experience here. I have three kids that did go to Central, and, you know, it was kind of like the campus was over there and we kept our distance out of respect for them, but there was opportunities for them to be in town and partner with different Pella businesses. I think this is just a great way to handshake with those individuals, bring them into our businesses, and get them involved in the community. Thanks.
Question for Central College, if the city doesn't participate, what's the college's plan for those tennis courts?
At some point, we'll have to address them. The question came up, so what if the answer is no? And my answer to that was, it just gets a lot tougher for us, because we're, where I talk about fundraising and that sort of stretching the same dollar. The, yeah, I don't seem here tonight, but I've got a longstanding relationship with Chuck and Marla Vanderwall. Chuck's like, this is, as a community and business member, this is just a no-brainer. You know, he said, I struggle at times when my dollar gets pulled in three different directions. To take those dollars and have three different entities collaborate on that, just makes all the sense in the world, so. Questions?
What has to be done to your courts?
They totally need to be resurfaced. So, average age of a court's approximately twenty-five years, our courts are forty years old. So essentially, and I'm not picking on the city, the same thing the city did with Kiwanis, just letting go too far where it can't be resurfaced anymore, is the same thing that Central College did with our courts. They just can't be just resurfaced, it needs to be totally renovated. So, yeah, our courts are approximately forty years old, and we just need to get brand-new courts, and that's where we thought this would be the time to collaborate and work with the community on doing something that's really unique and special, so.
So you're removing the old courts?
Correct.
Putting all the...
Yep.
Are there any thoughts on lighting in any of these courts?
We've talked about that a little bit, and the irony of it is, there's a company in Oskaloosa that does a little red lighting, whose president and CEO is passionate about pickleball, and mentioned that, that this moves forward, we may need to have a conversation on some lighting, but, yeah, we met with him, and ironically, him and his wife drove over to Pella on a weekly basis to play pickleball in Pella. That's how passionate he was, the president of Muskogee. So, yeah, conversations have been started on that, but great question.
Is twelve the right spot? Should we be thinking more?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, it's just the space that we have there now, as far as twelve, so I think we'll outgrow that. I don't think this is the last conversation over the next few years, the way that Central College and the Pickleball Club have the thought of it, it's the next phase. I think it will continue to grow and exceed just because of all the reasons said of, it's in elementary schools, it's in the junior high, it's young professionals that come to Pella Corp or Vermier that it's an easy networking. So I think it will continue to grow, but it's just a quick way to address the need now.
Is the six tennis courts right for Coach and Central?
Yeah, I think as of now, where we're at as far as roster size and stuff like that, it is, yeah. It gets a little bit more complicated just with our land layout to go more than that at this time without picking up your stuff, so, great question.
Are they dual-use courts?
When you say dual-use.
You know how they do the soccer and football on the football field? Are you guys putting pickleball courts on tennis courts?
Correct, yes, yes, so it can be used for both, correct, so.
Did they think about that at the high school?
Yeah, I think there's some reason...
Not going there, huh?
Yeah, yeah. We looked at that quite honestly, we do so much with the high school, if we really looked at that as an opportunity where we could step into that space without not doing that, that we could really fill that space and void that is severely lacking in this community, so.
And just a personal comment, I think it's just a shame that we haven't found some kind of mechanism to reopen those courts at Smash Park, even if the rest of the building is shot down, those are as marvelous playing facilities.
Right, it really is, and like I said, you don't have to talk to many, too many people to find out somebody's playing pickleball and just how, and once again, you can be eighty or you can be eight and play the sport, and you can play together. You know, that, that I think is pretty special about the sport.
I was in Oberlin Park, Kansas this weekend, and I'm a big supporter of this sport, because I just see, it's such a unique sport. And in the subdivision that I was in, there was a young teenage couple playing it, there was a grandmother, there was a grandmother, but setting all that aside, I started talking with the neighbors about, you know, about why they chose to move where they chose. And by the way, the entry-level home is eight hundred thousand dollars in this subdivision. And I asked if the pickleball courts played into that purchase of their home, and they said, absolutely, absolutely. And again, we look at ways to entice people to embrace our community as dearly as we all embrace it, and I think this is a fantastic way to do that. I really do, and I appreciate the hard work that I see in your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this a hard bid, or is this a three-year-old?
No, as of a week ago, we just got that, so, yep. And they have let us know that, like all things, their job's filled fairly quickly during the summer, but we notified them relatively soon, we can get on their schedule for late summer, and once again, have it up and going this fall, which I know how complicated other things are by the time you get engineers and everything else, so be able to do it that quickly and address it, we feel like is...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the time, we really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for the presentation, obviously, this will have to be a policy and planning discussion that we'll have. I assured Eric that the wheels are gonna turn slow, so we wouldn't be offering anything tonight, but we'll have to have a discussion about it. Okay? Okay, we'll move on to Resolution Number Six, six eight six, entitled, Resolution Improving Preliminary Plats to Proud Groups Thirteen Twenty-Two Subdivision. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain, it's a nice plat, and I'm concerned with Mr. Bruce Steenbaum. And for the preliminary plat, it's for a center ten acres of land, and what's being proposed is five total blocks, not orientated one. The highlighted area is a section of property that's under consideration for the preliminary plat. Where we talked about preliminary plats, this council's aware, preliminary plats are really the overall game plan for the development. Often developments are done in phases, and on the initial, you see it's the final plat, or you'll see a final plat that has infrastructure associated, but it's only for a portion of the property. Tonight, we're looking at the overall game plan for the property, so it's a preliminary plat. It is also important to note that Mr. Steenbaum and the city council, rather, had rezoned this property in May of two thousand twenty-one. At the time when we rezoned the property, it was to M1, which is limited light industrial at that time. It was a conditional rezoning that we had, and so traditionally, it was allowed on the property, we would consider it for traditional limited light industrial use as well. I would also like to state that at the time, we also incorporated design standards on the property. If you're determined by the property, you'll see a very nice building that we're proud to have in our community, it's a significant investment on the community, but that was part of the rezoning, so please keep that in mind as we review the preliminary plat this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And what we have here is the proposal for the developer to be in five lots, and that consists of one lot where the building is currently, where the current existing building is at, before it would be allowed to be built on that at a later date as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And please, we've covered this item on this as well. It is important to note that, as the council recall, when we talked about the additional development on Two Hundred Eighteenth Avenue, one of the items that we have often talked about, it's been a topic of the conversation, is when is the time to upgrade Two Hundred Eighteenth Avenue? The way we've been approaching it is on a site planning process, or when we get a site plan, actual development that takes place, we evaluate the off-site infrastructure, and we intend to do that with this development in the future as well. And finally, we'd like to mention that, as far as the nice recommendation from the staff, what we have is conditional recommendation, with the main condition would be that the property would need to be, or the property would typically, the zoning ordinance would need to be adjusted to align with this preliminary plat, so our recommendation is conditional through preliminary plat, with the condition that the city's zoning ordinance be adjusted to align with the preliminary plat that's being proposed this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the recommendation. Please, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. I get the motion for approval.
Similar.
Or, Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion?
So, Mike, what you're saying is, we are, we would be, this is the preliminary plat right there, and the final would be, what the, the, I see here was five lots, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the preliminary plat has five lots on it, and we may get a final for one lot on it, it could be done in phases, so that's really up to the developer and phasing in in the property at the time, so.
The big deal, what about the roads?
That is correct, that's what we mentioned. Our process, similar with the post-Tourmark Center Eighteenth Avenue development occurs, we get a site plan in, we evaluate the traffic, we also evaluate is the time to upgrade the road as well.
That mean, so again, if this is gonna be, it's industrial, right, we've zoned it, is it industrial without the sound?
It is, it was, it is industrial. It, it isn't, it was, it is industrial, it was a portion of the property, and the lease was commercial, zoning at the time, but it is industrial, and all factors into the decision whether to drop the road back to their own or the existing road rather.
They have a seat plan to be, uh, these would be, um, good properties to have available in the city for sure. And also seem like this is the, this is the time to talk about, continue to talk about the road.
How does this fit into the current top plan, this, this corridor? I don't recall, um, I know we're revisiting that.
Right.
But, uh, how, how does this fit in the bigger, uh, our current compass?
I'll give you the textbook answer. Uh, council determined in May of two thousand twenty-one that align with the comprehensive plan. Now, that's just, uh, with that, uh, explain that, that's a very good question, Dr. Carlson. With the comprehensive plan, I believe at the time it had limited light or it had commercial on, on this, on this portion of the set. We spent a lot of time with that when we rezoned the property, and at the time, we thought to align with the city's comprehensive plan. The reason why the property has design standards on it, because it was commercial, all buildings would be subject to design standards as well. We also went through from a use standpoint, and we removed all the questionable uses that typically are associated with M1. If you read through the zoning ordinance, most people associate M1 zoning as district traditional industrial uses. But I believe we removed some of the uses that typically end up in zoning industrial districts such as bars and taverns, for instance, tattoo parlors. All those items were removed, so it is a conditional for, for these break-forward industrial development. And then, from the zoning ordinance standpoint, at the time, because we were looking at going from commercial to industrial, we actually required a conceptual plan at, at the time, and that's, with the conceptual plans, what you see up here in the ordinance, where we had three buildings on here as far as the development of the plan. So, we spent a lot of time back in two thousand one, talking about aligning with the city's comprehensive plan. The design standards, the use limitations, the conceptual plan, all came out from all those discussions, and all of them have with the line with the city's current comprehensive plan.
And, and who owns the road? Is the road in the city, or?
Now, um, as far as the ownership of the road, I'm not sure if it's feet title or if we have it right way even, but this portion of the property is within the city limits. If you don't cross the street, I believe that's just outside of the city limits. So, literally for this section of the road, it's almost half and half.
Okay, anything else? And we will vote on the, uh, motion to approve, uh, Resolution, Resolution Number Six, six-eight-six. All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, say no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Roberts.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Tyrland.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number Six, six-eight-seven, entitled, "Resolution Improving Third Amendment to the Agreement with Cal Services Inc. Doing Business as Midwest Sanitation." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like for everyone's attention, for, for presentation on this item. As Mayor said, we're closing this evening, which is an extension of the city's solid lease contract, Midwest Sanitation. What the three-year extension will do includes expiration dates through July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-seven. It's important to know, as far as key changes with the agreement, is we have an annual price increase that the contractor would be eligible on July first of each year. That price increase is the same amount that is awarded to the city's full-time employees on July first of each year by the city councils, but somewhat variable, depends what the city council does with the city's full-time employees. It is also important to note that we are also adding a variety of locations on this. These are all services that essentially the contracts inception that we've taken over at Midwest Sanitation is also included in their, uh, their services as well. That would be the Bosson Golf, of course, pull ambulance, as well as pull fiber communications. There are no other service, uh, service level changes being requested within this contract. I would also like to say, uh, before we get to the full price issue on this, as well, city staff believes Midwest Sanitation provides an excellent service to this community, and we've been very pleased with their level of service, uh, and as well as our relationship with Midwest Sanitation. Finally, um, on this, council, when we discuss this, I believe it's a determination, they said that guidance that city staff had, is we previously determined proposed pricing being posed by Midwest Sanitation is competitive, and better pricing would not be obtained as a result of many. And as a result, we are recommending approval of the three-year contract extension of the city's Midwest Sanitation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
That was Indianism.
It was.
So, I'm, I'm gonna give it to Ms. Tyrland with support from Brad. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ian Tyrland.
Yes.
Ray Roberts.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, and motion for approval of Abstract Bill Number Twenty-One Forty-Nine? Young, Carl Stone, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Young.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Tyrland.
Yes.
Ray Roberts.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you want to address, want to have addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to address council with tonight? If so, please step forward to microphone, say your name and address, and please manage your comments to three minutes.
I know you wanted to say sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Harry Urwick, Seven Twenty-Five Countryside Lane. I wanted to just briefly address item I two that's coming up under your policy and planning, uh, proposed water rate increase. And I'm not saying that one isn't ma, there isn't, uh, needed, but this came up a year ago in March, the last budget cycle, and, uh, wasn't implemented. And I had suggested then, because of my, some experience, that some kind of increase might be warranted, but in reading the memo from staff, and hopefully in your presentation, there'll be some kind of background of, the analysis has been young, as to whether seven percent is the number or some other number. And secondly, in the cost of service studies that I've been involved in in the past, we've also looked at the fixed cost, or, you know, the, uh, service charge versus commodity rate, whether or not those should be adjusted at the same time. So, I would just suggest that you look at that as you talk about it, and encourage you to, you know, uh, give good direction to the staff on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we move into the policy and planning. There are a couple things. The first item is the Bosson Golf cart purchase options. Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. What we'd like to have input from the city council on is our lease for golf carts, and Bosson Golf cart expired actually in February of this year. And so, what we have is a few options for a new lease. Now, currently, we're at forty-six thousand dollar annual lease payment for the carts. And renewing the lease, as staff did see this through Sourcewell, which is a cooperative purchasing agency as well. The little bidder on the carts, uh, for the city was MBE Golf Carts, and they provided these two options for, for the acquisition of the golf, uh, for the golf carts. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Option number one would be just if they sold and we purchased the golf cart for MBE, what they would have proposed, and this would also include three sixty utility vehicles. A purchase price just shy of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars on this. It's also important to note that we would need a contract with the local firm for maintenance of the carts as well. Now, we listed up on the board the warranties that would come with the new parts as well. Option number two, and let's go ahead, please, Mandy, would be a five-year lease, and this would be a lease purchase agreement, and we'd have annual payments of just over fifty-two thousand dollars a year. At the end of the lease period, the city would have an option to buy the parts, and that purchase price would be approximately a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Included with our lease, uh, lease payment would be the annual maintenance on the carts as well. And really where this issue came up at is with legal counsel on this, and it's not Emily on this, but we want to, you know, oversimplify things on this. But there's under eye of the law, when you enter into leases, that bond counsel, and it's not bond counsel, the guidance that have under state law on a lease is treated as debt financing. And from a legal standpoint, legal firms have to do the same amount of work from the law of lease of fifty-five thousand dollars a year as if you're selling a ten million dollar bond. And so, the bond fees for lease purchase arrangement are in excess of about ten thousand dollars, because that's where the typical bond, uh, work is. And there's also opinions given on the financing as well. And that's why we wanted to talk to the council before we chose a path, which path to go down on this as well. We were able to do an interfund loan with the city's electric utility for instance, to borrow the money. The lease payment that we proposed up here is about six point two-five percent. We believe that we can actually have a better rate through the city's electric utility. And Mandy, let's go ahead, and maybe we'll be able to cover this. Yeah, six point two-five percent. With that, an interfund rate would be at the city's investment rate that we currently have in our investments, which is about five point two-five percent. And so, the, with this option, and I want to stress with council, this is the same funds that were considering for instance on the city's long-term facility plan of financing pledges with as well. So, this would be about three hundred and some thousand dollars that the electric utility would be loaning to general fund under option number one, and we would purchase the carts under option number one for three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Option number two would involve just a straight, not a lease, but immediately a lease purchase, and the rate would be six point two-five percent. At the end of the lease period, we'd have an opportunity to purchase the carts for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on it. But option number two would also involve additional legal fees with that, because the legal opinion is required for bond issues, and all the other work is the same for a lease of this magnitude compared to a typical city bond issue, that could be a multi-million dollar bond issue. So, with that, and finally, Jeanette and Kevin have all sorts of information on the Bosson Golf course. I'm sure they can help me out on that. It's important to note, takeaway with the golf carts is our rental income that we have in our budget that we just passed this year was a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars from golf cart fees on this as well. So, they're critical, we live on the golf course. And again, as far as trying to consider which item is right for the city, we have to opt into either purchase it outright or a utilities purchase agreement. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for direction from the council on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Counselor? What's the, um, maybe considering your somewhere, so purchase, uh, what would be the term of that, if we borrow money?
Well, what we would do is we'd probably look at a five-year, uh, near-fund long-term electric utility that we pay back to the general fund. We have an interest rate of five point two-five percent, because that's the current rate that we're investing our electric funds at. So, we would just loan the city's general fund, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to purchase the carts.
Well, a big deal in maintenance, which is taking care of a lease, and talking to Kevin, we are looking at a lot of maintenance right now. And over the years for our delivery stock at the greenhouse, I've looked at leases other times, and the killer was always the buyout at the end of the lease period because our, our purchases are kind of customized. We intend to hang on to it. I would have no interest in buying out five-year old golf carts at the end of the lease period. That, that would be a killer.
Currently, we're leasing year-to-year. Is that correct?
Um, Jeanette and Kevin are currently, said expired in February. Was it a five-year lease that we had? I think it was a five-year lease that expired in February.
Okay, and it was, and they were paying forty-six thousand a year?
That is correct.
And did they cover the maintenance of those carts?
I believe so. The prices have gone up.
So, what would a new five-year straight-up lease, that we didn't have to pay legal, to not lease purchase, but just lease?
We tried that, um, actually, uh, Jeanette and Kevin, please help me, but I think we've got the, the interest rate on a straight lease, it was seven and a half. Yeah, so, the, the company, if it was not a lease purchase, was supposed to six point two-five percent, it was gonna charge us seven and a half percent for a straight lease. And the other option is, we tried straight lease, but legal counsel's opinion was it didn't matter if it was a lease purchase or just a straight lease. It's still debt financing, they still had to do their, the bond work.
Did we do that the last time?
That, I think it was, it may have been, but I, I don't.
No, the answer is no.
We did that last.
This says forty-six thousand. It'd look like a lot better deal. Well, it's gonna be different.
Yes.
That's now.
Yeah.
So, we didn't, we don't know what, just a five-year, they own the carts, they take care of the carts. At the end of five years, we can get a new set of carts.
Yeah, we know that. The interest rate would be seven and a half percent.
Well, what, what's the annual price?
The annual price is gonna be more than fifty-two thousand, if you go over an interest rate of six point two-five percent, up to seven and a half percent.
No, but we don't have, we don't have ownership. I, owning these carts doesn't look like a fun thing to me.
Yeah, what do you do after five years or whatever, too?
Yeah.
So, annual is one fifty-one-ish. The lease, the pure lease, let's say even a seven and a half, is about sixty thousand or sixty-five thousand. You still make money off the lease, right?
We would make money off the lease, and I guess just if we get, if we bought, we bought the carts, hopefully they have more effective life than five years. Then there will be increased maintenance five years from now on those carts.
What's the, uh, is there a projected value? What's, so, I put, so, three sixty-five with five and a quarter in five-year terms, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, plus fourteen thousand in main, maintenance, so we're looking at fifty thousand dollars. If we buy it, that year costs, what's, what's, uh, what are these carts valued in five years?
A hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Zero.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a lease, that's what, that's what we'd buy it for.
So, if there were a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so, we sell back, we basically, at the end of five years, we sell to one of these golf cart companies. We basically bought ourselves a cheaper lease rate, so to speak, without the maintenance being on five years.
Funny answer to the question, and it's apparently dependent on the market conditions five years from now. Might, this number is assuming the dead value of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that's the buyout on the lease of five years that exists in the carts.
So, presumably it's less than that, that's what they're charging us, so we'll just say it's fifty thousand or whatever it is.
I have, I have a parking lot conversation I had in St. Edward Kevin yesterday, and right now, maintenance is killing us, a killer in that term. It's batteries, it's the starters, it's this, that.
They, they don't treat their stuff, uh, as well as you might treat your leased vehicle, because it's your leased vehicle.
Yeah. But it would, these would be new cars. Yeah, so then we'd be start, and the carts that we have that were spending maintenance on, they're five years old, right, so.
Then we don't have the warranty anymore on them. That's, that's the.
That's the big kicker, and these, and these on purchase would have. Well, I was, I was, I made the suggestion to consider buying them, because fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees for a lease is ridiculous in my head. Uh, plus they're brand-new carts for five years. I've got a nineteen ninety-two cart out of County Club. That runs perfectly, it goes around as often as you want, too. These carts are not gonna be junk in five years. From, for me, just from cash flow, just simply cash flow, it makes sense to buy it. And that doesn't, that doesn't factor in, uh, that doesn't factor in its value after five years. And it might be ten years, and at that point, it's effectively free maintenance time. Kevin's out there shaving his head about buying. But what was the warranty? They're all brand-new. These are all brand-new, right? And they carry a five-year, four-year warranty, or five years, five years on the engine, four years canopy?
It's prorated. It's prorated. They, um, let's just say your, your ninety-two cart is probably made differently, just like a car ninety-two is made differently than what it is now. So, different things are, don't last as long, but there's a reason why that warranty is that way. Certain things last longer than others. So, you could look at it as a CIP of looking at the budgeting in the CIP in five years for replacing.
Yeah, the assumption that we go back and start over, buy new ones in five years. Which, even if you look at it that way. Yeah. Conservatively, that's how we figure, we're still, uh, with thirty-five thousand. Conservatively, that's how we figure, we're still, uh, with a thirty-five thousand dollar payment a year and working up.
Not thirty-five thousand a year. So hundred fifty, sixty-five thousand divided by five is about seventy-three thousand a year, plus your fourteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I, I did not wrong.
Seven dollars tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I, I'd like to see what, what, just the straight lease that you still have to pay. I would, I would ignore the, uh, I do pay the legal fee, but I guess you can't. I mean, you know, anyway, I would like to see what is the cost per year, we own the carts. They have to take, they have to keep the carts running. How, how are they doing that? It just seems like, because whatever we spend, if we borrow the money from the electric firm, then we don't have that cash to spend somewhere else. We, we, we're trying to stretch the cash around. So if you pay annually something.
It was higher than the fifty-two thousand.
Well, I know, it's, it's, it's going to be sixty thousand or something.
Mike, I'm not, I'm not tracking with, uh, on the lease payment, interest rate. You're, you're saying that changes the interest rate?
Yeah, they did.
I'm not tracking with, uh, what the mechanism is there for interest rate as opposed to just simply what our lease payment would be.
Well, the lease, on the straight lease, we don't have lease purchase option on it, the seven and a half percent rate improved on it. For the lease purchase option, it has six point two-five percent.
So again, so we were, we don't have to buy them in the lease on just a straight lease. They're going to buy it after. Gotcha. So what, what was that dollar amount? Twenty, what was the buyout?
Yeah, they had five years of a lease purchase outside the, the six point two-five percent. We wanted to purchase the carts at the end of the five years, it'd be a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
So the lease without purchase is fifty-two thousand?
Uh, the lease with purchase is fifty-two thousand. Without that, I believe the council member, Butler, referenced sixty thousand, it sounds about potentially.
Just a guess.
Yeah, yeah. They wanted to use it for ballpark discussions, but there is a significant in- increase in interest rate without the lease purchase.
Kevin, what did you say, uh, we collected rentals here in golf carts? Does that all fit in with the, the, the thing? Was one fifty-one?
We had a, yeah, we're budgeting one hundred and fifty-one thousand for this, for this fiscal year. Last season, twenty-three, we took in about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And we've increased cart rates, fees, uh, to cover.
That's what's your plan?
Cover the plan for the rate increase on these.
That's, that's what I thought you'd say.
And I think the straight lease, Mike, was around fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six.
Just a little bit over the top of that.
When was the last cart fee raised?
We just, we just raised them here in twenty-four season.
But are you, just, if we go with a straight lease, no buyout, we still need to do it as a bond issue?
That is correct. Fortunately, you can't get away from the legal fees.
What's, just for my education sake, what's, why can't we interfund it? What's illegal about that?
We can interfund it, what'll happen if we choose that option. Legal counsel, they've been, they've been very good to work with. This is what the law states, uh, I don't want to make clear what's clear, but we can interfund loan it, what'll happen. So at the next council meeting, we'll go over what the electric utilities' part fund balance is according to industry standards and on the trial of law. We'll take a look at what they're available, what their fund balance is, and that difference is going to be identified as surplus. And we believe that we have three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to loan the general fund. And at the end, that council authorizes that, that's, that'll be the funding source for the golf carts.
Do we know why it's being illegal or outside the law to borrow from, interfund for a lease?
No, it's not, it's not illegal, it is perfectly legal at any time. You transfer funds from the electric utility or water utility or wastewater utility under Iable law. The requirement is you have to take care of all operations under the utility as well. So that's why it's important to look at the required fund balance. Make sure over that, then you can, the council has the right, or that is surplus fund, if we zone, as they desire.
It, it would have been good to have had this discussion during the CIP. It's not on the CIP, but the lease expected in February.
It's in the operating, the loss line and operating costs. So I think we had it embedded in their operating, but it.
Well, okay.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't looked at as a CIP. It was, because it was just looked at as an operating lease.
And where would we have seen that?
It's in their operating details, so it would have been under the loss line and cost center, under the loss line and golf course, I believe they had the new lease amount that they had up at the time of the project, fifty-two thousand or so.
So the, the lease cost is, but is in the budget. I brought this up because when Mike called and told me about fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees to renew the lease, I said, now let's, if I would have said anything, we'd just had the lease. But I thought.
You moneyed the law.
I moneyed it, because I thought, this is crazy, that we got to pay that for a golf cart. That's, that's how it got brought. So the budget, the budget, or the budget, uh, the cost of the lease is in the budget. So, so we can just renew the lease?
So we already approved that?
I have one final comment. Don't get a black canopy. It's hot. You get a white canopy.
You'd see the best, a worse-ear golfer like me where you spend more time out. Probably digging holes.
Anyway. Well, anyway, we just, we got a consequence to the.
Bottom line, what's the cheapest way to go?
I have another question. Go with the staff like you work with.
New golf carts.
I know. Um, the lease has worked well for the last five years, or four and a half, five years. Um, obviously, that would be the preferred way. Obviously, there's a lot of legal fees that are involved with this, um, that was unknown prior to all this. So, um, you know, we're strapped for time trying to maintain course clubhouse. It's, you know, keeping carts refreshed. It's cross landing, you know, there's a lot of hills and everything, trying to maintain these carts. Um, if we own them consistently past that five-year timeframe, I'm afraid we're going to have some customer dissatisfaction, you know, not having the carts available when we need them. You know, our rounds are going up, so we need to have good carts for a reputable course. Um, we need to have some reputable, decent, decent cars. So the legal fees obviously is a big thing. And the timing of that, I mean, to be able to go through the timing on, in front of you guys for approval, Mike, I think that's another month process.
Okay.
Potential.
But the other thing to look at is legal fees, that's all, that's on five-year lease rate.
That's on the lease.
So, so what I'm saying is it's, it's three thousand dollars a year. So it's, it's still silly, but it's not significant over the course of it. So from a cash flow perspective, this, the cheapest is just a straight lease.
Yeah, and didn't we already approve the lease when we had just approved the budget? That was already in there?
It was approved, it was, we approved the order amount. But legal counsel, this statement is, uh, where this came about, the lease is unfortunately, it's going to require the council to prove one or the other, so. But if we choose the lease, what will happen is there'll be a public hearing. There'll also be a bond attorney opinion on whether it's taxable or non-taxable. But, um, we won't get into those details, but it'll be created as a, as a bond issue.
If the lease, can we take the governor off of them and go a little bit faster? More speed is always good.
Eric, go through insurance liability.
There are some people that are afraid of life going fast. Especially on some of those hills, you don't want them going fast.
I bet that your math puts it in perspective on lease.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Purchase is significant more per year. It could be less if, if we figure out that at the end, we would re-sold. Then we see, I'm, I'm usually promoting the purchase.
Color and lead?
So, so the, uh, consensus is to just go with the original lease or re-lease them? Okay.
Without, without the option.
With the.
With, don't know.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, uh, second item, proposed water rate increase.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and this evening, as the council mayor recall, we actually had, actually did a seven percent water rate increase for this current fiscal year. And someone laid on this, and the reason why it was laid is this year we had some issues that developed in the city dwell system and also our creative plan, uh, looking at, we had roughly between four to five hundred thousand dollars of unbudgeted expenditures. With that, um, looking at the options, we did, kind of, this rate increase was approved in two thousand twenty-four. We stated that we'd be tapped back and make an opinion if it was needed or not. Now it appears that we're going to be also issuing a potential proposal, a bond issue to cover those unaccounted expenditures that we had with the water utility from this last year. With the proposed bond issue that we have, we believe the seven percent increase is needed on, on this portion for this year. And so what we have listed up on the board is what would be the impact on, depending on your usage that you have. So most residential customers, it'd be roughly three dollars and seventy-six cents per month on the water rate increase, which would be a seven percent in the water rate increase if we started the ordinance now or at the next council meeting. It's, uh, would actually be effective for July usage of this year. So, um, with that, we just wanted to make sure council is aware that we are recommending the seven percent increase in its tied-to-budgeted expenditures incurred in the water utility this last year.
Any, any considerations in doing this cost of service survey?
Yeah, we did a cost of service survey. The last one was in two thousand and fourteen when we adopted a rig structure. Typically, the cost of service survey is not going to, anything from that. It wasn't two thousand and fourteen, it was later than that. But we actually did a cost of service survey when we did, and we switched over from the collector well, the river, primarily to the reverse osmosis system at that time. And so the cost of service survey was tied directly to our rates on it. Now, it's up to councils, per view of how if you want to go out and redo the cost of service. Typically, where cost of service surveys come out is when there's a concern that you're not having accurate cost allocations back to the individual customer. So in other words, we're looking at the seven percent increase on this. If there was a concern that the lease and the water doesn't necessarily align, who's actually paying the fees on that? Um, that's typically the case, usually when we've seen it with the water utility, that's one scenario. The second scenario is if you do a big improvement and potentially could change, you know, like the reverse osmosis, or the reverse osmosis, major cost of reverse osmosis to the electric utility fees associated with reverse osmosis for the dynamics and cost track was somewhat changed comparatively to a collector well. That's when we chose to do one back in two thousand seventeen. We could always do another cost of survey, service study. Um, I believe that the rate, the last time we paid was somewhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for one that typically is associated with the concern with that, on that, so.
Well, yeah, okay, so the, what, what I, the reason I ask that is, uh, is seven percent a not for too much? You know, it's kind of like.
Yeah, seven percent, what we think is, ain't answering that question. We think it's warranted, particularly what they did with the bond issue that we have. We think we're going to need that for debt coverage ratios this year for water utility. When I talk about debt coverage, that's the operating income of the utility. When they were looking at the net operating income, and they divide that by your debt service expenditure, and we're required to have ratios on that. So we believe that the seven percent is going to be necessary to fund that. Now, full disclosure, for two, three years, we should, we'll be looking at whether we would need to increase water annual, water rates on an annual, annual basis. A lot of utilities have aggregated an annual two to three percent increase on your water, wastewater utilities. The reason for that is interviews and compliance is to get the water into your hard on that. And so a lot of utilities have, they guarantee or they automatically increases. The other utilities on this do have more fixed charge involved too, and less of a variable charge on that. And that relates somewhat back to your cost of service as well.
I'm pretty familiar with the struggles they've been having with that new well. And I question whether seven percent is enough to keep this game going.
Might not be, uh, to be honest with you, seven percent will take care of the bond issue, we believe. But it's very likely that it'll start falling in two years, this, this year twenty-six. We may have to wait until increases to somewhere three percent.
What's the, what's around that, those unfunded, like, cash?
They're right around almost a half million dollars that happened in the water utility this last year.
Okay, anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Young, Carl Stone, all in favor, please say yes. Pose no, may you please call roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Bill.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Jan Craig.
Yes.
Ray Nambour.
Yes.
We are adjourned.